Miss Garcia, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Teetz. Hold on, let me check to see if she's joined in a second. Not yet. Um, Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make an amendment. Um, and actually, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone consideration of item F dot two, a resolution of the town of Wellington, Colorado, supporting electric election integrity and security indefinitely. Uh, and just for the public's understanding, we have a work session on that topic uh, coming up on June eighteenth where we'll be discussing this, so um, I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Miss Garcia, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Hey, Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest with this evening's agenda? No.
I don't know if it's a conflict when we go into the alcohol portion, but I was on the planning commission when this came before us, so just want to disclose that.
Okay, thank you. Um, now would be time for public comment. Any individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Um, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, Dawn Peacock. And um, this is not a topic that you would expect that I'd be talking on. I went to the LC one oh one um, classes, which was amazing, learned so much about Limer County. Um, but there were a couple of things that bothered me, and I wanted to bring it to your attention because it has to do with the board. When I brought up um, the roundabout, what I was told was, well, maybe Wellington should have thought about that before they built the school. And this was not from the planners, this was from other, other people that worked for Limer County. So this was not like the people that were running the, the class. This was not um, like Jordan and them. So yeah, so it's like, well, maybe they should have talked to us or thought about it before they built the school. And then when I brought up the bridge, they said, well, maybe they should have thought about building on the eastern side, you know? Maybe they should have thought about the bridge before they started building houses on the eastern side. Now, obviously, none of you guys were on the board when we were building houses on the eastern side of I twenty-five. But instead of saying productive things in, in my mind, that's what they said. So basically, guys, they don't have a real high opinion of, of Wellington and our lack of planning. And I just wanted you to know that, that there are people working for the county that are saying this. And I for one don't appreciate it, so I don't know what we can do to change that, but I really think that there needs to be a concerted effort to make sure that they understand that Wellington isn't some I can't say. Um, insignificant town. We are eleven thousand people strong. We are proud of who we are. We are not just some place that you throw a, a dump. Actually, I think that, you know, it's, it'll be a, a great contribution to um, to not only the county, but to us. And we'll, we'll see how that goes, but, but I'm not anti-dump or anything like that. But um, I just really think that um, as a town, we need to make sure that we get the respect that we deserve, so.
Thank you. All right, no more further public comment. Um, next we have a proclamation from Trustee Mo- oh.
My name's Stephen Carman. Living in Wellington. Um, I'd like to thank you all for your service to the city of uh, Wellington. And my statement is about just proclamations in general, not any ins- in particular. There are many reasons a municipality may issue proclamations. I like the way the city of Denver frames their reason. Proclamations from the city are issued by the mayor to honor, celebrate, and create awareness of an event, milestone, or achievement, and in rare cases, individuals of interest to the broader community. As I looked over the last number of proclamations that have been issued in Wellington, from twenty twenty-three through May fourteenth, Wellington issued a whopping thirty proclamations, three times that of Fort Collins, who issued in that same time period, ten. May of last year, we had four. Those same four proclamations were also issued on May fourteenth of this year, which just seems interesting to me. Many of these are proclaiming what has already been proclaimed by others or are already recognized on public calendars. Others like those I mentioned on May fourteenth of twenty-four were also proclaimed in May of twenty-three. My concern is that these proclamations may lose their intended or potential impact or value to foster a strong community. On a lighter note, today is National Call Your Doctor Day, National Corn on the Cob Day, Say Hi Day, Rural Pet Memorial Day, maybe consideration for proclamations in the future. My understanding, which may not be fully correct, is currently there is not a formal or published set of guidelines or request process for proclamations. And so I'm recommending that you consider implementing or adopting guidelines for how proclamations are created or submitted and extending that to uh, the city of Wellington and their residents. The cities of Fort Collins, Estes Park, and Longmont, as well as many other cities throughout Colorado, have adopted guidelines for how proclamations are created. They also extend that to their residents. These include things like they're requested by a resident. Sounds like a good idea. Must have local connection to a person, organization, or event. Must have community-wide benefit. Must not take sides in matters of political, ideological, or religious beliefs or controversy. The local recipient must be present in receiving of a proclamation. It must be signed by the mayor. I understand that some of these guidelines may be present in the current practice in Wellington. My recommendation is to consider that as something to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, having no more further public comment. Um, next will be a proclamation from Trustee Moyer. Trustee Moyer?
Proclamation for Pride Month. Whereas the town of Wellington Community Vision states that we are a friendly and supportive community that welcomes you with a smile. Whereas the town of Wellington strives to be one of the best small towns in America to live and work, recognized as a great place to raise a family, own a unique business, and create memorable experiences through community. And whereas it is imperative that people in the Wellington community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and self-authenticity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, neighbors, and community leaders. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Wellington's LGBTQIA+ community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And in witness thereof, I call upon all residents of Wellington to join me in recognizing the achievements and contributions of the LGBTQIA+ community plus throughout history, celebrating the diversity of our town and the right of all people to live authentically, promoting inclusivity and fostering a welcoming environment for everyone, and working collaboratively to ensure equal rights and opportunities for all residents. Now therefore, the town of Wellington hereby proclaims the month of June twenty twenty-four as Pride Month in the town of Wellington and urges all citizens to embrace and promote the ideal of a welcoming and supportive community for all who live, work, and play here. I'd like to invite Nick to come and accept this proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, I now close the regular meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board, time being six forty-three PM. Miss Garcia, may I get a roll call?
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Thank you. Uh, the first item before the Liquor License Authority Board is a new license applicant for uh, Get Well LLC DBA, The Well in Wellington. Uh, since this item is a new liquor license application, we will hold a public hearing on this item. And to begin, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications that members of the board wish to disclose? Okay. Uh, will staff please introduce this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is Ethan, attending Ethan Moose, Town Clerk, attending virtually.
One second there, Mr. Moose.
You're not loud enough, do I need to do something on my end, Ethan?
If you're able to turn up um, the output perhaps on the computer volume there, that, that may be sufficient.
I hadn't tested now, Mr. Moose.
Testing.
Yeah, perfect.
Much better, thank you.
Okay, great, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is Ethan Moose, the Town Clerk, with you virtually. Uh, can you all hear me just fine, sounds like?
Yes.
Great, okay, we'll get this started then. Um, the first item that I'll be uh, presenting to you this evening, as Mr. Mayor mentioned, was the uh, new application for a brew pub city license from Get Well LLC. They submitted this, excuse me, the applicant submitted this application and the town accepted it on May the tenth, uh, and staff have, have subsequently verified that the applicant has a current sales tax license uh, and is in possession of a certificate of good standing issued by the Colorado Secretary of State. The applicant has provided additional information regarding the legal possession use and orientation of the licensed premises and the background and suitability of the managing member. Further, the applicant has been informed of the responsibility to provide evidence regarding the needs, desires, and reasonable requirements of their neighborhood and has submitted responsive evidence, which has been included in the packet. Finally, uh, Limer County Sheriff's Office conducted an inspection of the proposed premises on um, May the twenty-ninth, and a report of that inspection is attached for your reference. Uh, notice has been posted in accordance with legal requirements for this public hearing this evening, and staff recommend that uh, the board hold a public hearing on the application to determine two factors. First, the needs, desires, and reasonable requirements of the neighborhood for the proposed license and premise. And then second, the suitability of the applicant to hold a license. If through the course of the public hearing and consideration of the evidence presented in or included in the packet, the board finds that the needs, desires, and reasonable requirements of the neighborhood and applicant suitability are sufficient, we recommend that you approve this license application. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does the applicant wish to present on this item?
Good evening, I'm Twyla Souls. I've been a Wellington community member since twenty thirteen. When I moved grouse malt house to eighty-one twenty-one First Street in Wellington. Grouse is a craft malt house, we buy grain from local farmers, primarily Colorado, southern Wyoming, and we sprout those grains, those seeds into malt. So we make naturally gluten-free malt, we're an industry leader in the manufacturing of gluten-free malt. We sell wholesale coast to coast as well as internationally. The Well in Wellington is a venture that I've been working on for the past three years to showcase the malt grouse makes in local craft beer. So our goal is to be able to sell the craft beer we make, as well as other beer, wine, and spirits. Another goal is to open up the iconic and unique space of the Wellington elevator to the Wellington, the northern Colorado, community. We have the infrastructure and plans in place to lawfully operate a taproom, including our brewing area is separate, separated from our sales and taproom area. We will pay federal excise tax on what we produce. All of our employees will be responsible vendor-trained, specifically tips-trained, to prevent the under, the serving of minors, as well as the over-serving of our guests. The tips training will include training on how to properly check IDs. We will have a book underneath the bar that shows different state licenses and how to properly read them. We will display the birthdate of the customers we can legally serve alcohol to. We will have a minor warning sign posted. We will not accept virtual um, vertical IDs or expired licenses. All non-liquor licensed areas will be locked, as well as marked accordingly, with no alcohol beyond this point signs. And we will have staff monitoring all premises and ensuring that alcohol is kept within our liquor, liquor license boundaries. Our typical operating hours are anticipated to be weekends only, two to nine PM, with the occasional exceptions. We will employ three to four part-time staff, all which will be tips-certified and retrained every two years. At least fifteen percent of our on-premise sales will come from food, those will be prepackaged foods such as chips and popcorn and charcuterie boards. We plan to serve our own in-house brewed beer, as well as other beer, wine, and spirits, as well as non-alcoholic beverages. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, specifically if you have questions about the liquor license perimeter.
Any questions on the license itself?
I actually have um, the same question that I had when you were in front of the planning commission. So a brew pub, I'm trying to find where the hours, and maybe you can tell me, Dan. Um, weekends only. I think they're required hours for business. And I'm just curious if this is an event space or a brew pub, based on the only weekend hours?
We are definitely, we're applying for a brew pub license, given that we want to make our own beer and sell our beer and sell other beer.
Yes, I understand that, but it's not zoned for an event space, and what you are describing is not a brew pub that is open to the public, it's a weekend-only event. Slash, I mean, you have beer, so do other events, so I'm just trying to understand.
Are, are you referencing our land use code, uh, Trustee Moyer?
Yes. And I'm wondering about the hours of operation.
Let me.
I don't believe that there are any hours of operation requirements for a brew pub liquor license space.
Give me a few moments to look this up.
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I would have asked.
That hadn't, hadn't occurred to me before, but uh, I'll take that. Is Cody here?
Yes, he, he's looking it up as well, so I ca- I kept kind of glancing back.
I'm sorry, I asked questions before this, so this is one that came to me later, I apologize, you guys.
I also have a question, since this deals with the license and also the premises. You've been in, in those premises since how long, please?
Since August of twenty thirteen.
August of twenty thirteen. Um, and this might be more informational, I might need some staff backup on this, but there was a, uh, an agreement made uh, when the original OCB and yourself um, were working together, and that agreement involved paving the parking lot um, out there, and that's never been done. So I'm, I'm curious if there's any plans to, to, to honor that agreement? Is that agreement still valid? And that's a staff question.
No, no, that it's related to the.
So a lot of this is not related to the Liquor License Authority?
Well, I, I was under the impression that since we're talking about the proposed license and the premises, you know, the access to the brew pub and so forth, so I, if this is not a valid question for this, this board, then I will.
For purposes of this hearing, the, the primary questions are the needs and desires of the neighborhood and the um, appropriateness or the, the suitability of the applicant to hold this. Um, this has already gone through land, um, or as you said, the, the planning commission.
Actually, it went to the planning, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Dan. It went to the planning commission. It was postponed, reevaluated, and then officially withdrawn by the applicant, and then circumvented the planning commission to the Board of Adjustments, where there was a variance that was awarded, and none of the um, requirements or other items that the planning commission asked for, including the paved parking lot, were addressed at all. So the only um, modification that I believe has happened is a fence.
So point of order, uh, this is for the liquor licensing, this should not be about anything other than that at this point in time. Um, so please keep, keep your minds focused on us as being the Liquor License Authority Board right now.
Yes, and I would say that it doesn't meet code requirements, which is part of liquor licensing. I researched it today, tell me if I, I mean, am I wrong?
Needs to be operated in compliance with law.
Right.
Which, when you reference the, the days of the week that you've been, you found in land use code, what are you referencing there? And I'm not familiar with that provision requiring it to.
That was a question. I think in some states there are hourly requirements for brew pubs to operate.
In the town of Wellington, for, for brew pubs, the only requirement is that service deliveries only be between the hours of eight AM and eight PM. It's not a requirement for the hours of operation, so there's nothing of that sort in our, in our town code.
Okay, that's fine.
So, during these, these hours, even though it's just open on weekends, are, are certainly suitable for this use within the town.
Perfect, thank you.
And Trustee, Trustee Teetz had her hand raised as well.
Trustee Teetz?
You, you, if I may also just briefly interrupt, since Trustee Teetz joined, uh, Mr. Mayor, you may want to ask for any ex parte or conflicts of interest.
Oh, okay.
I'll note as a, uh, because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, um, a remote trustee cannot vote on this matter and should not be participating in this um, this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
That was actually why I had my hand raised, is I just wanted to let you know I'm on, but I'm going to stay silent through this, just so you guys can proceed with your hearing.
Thank you, Trustee Teetz.
Opinions not changing.
Okay. Any other questions from the board at this point in time?
Uh, can you tell me more details about canvassing the neighborhood and the feedback that you received? I see the responses, but do you have any feedback otherwise? Just that we um, received an overwhelming interest in, in having the well in Wellington be open to the public.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now open the public hearing on this item, time being six fifty-six PM. Members of public wishing to comment on this item, um, please sign on the sheet, state your name and podium for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Josiah Burke, um, I uh, am a homeowner at the residence at thir- uh, thirty-seven oh one McKinley, which is right across the street from uh, where the uh, well is going, going to be uh, operating. Um, and I just wanted to uh, voice my support um, for her uh, liquor license. I'm excited for a bar and taproom to be um, in close proximity and a convenient um, uh, place for us to get to. Um, just to reiterate some of the things that I said dur- during the, the variance uh, uh, hearing. Um, I like the way that, that uh, Tweely's do, doing business. Um, she's taken uh, the uh, community into consideration, has been very neighborly and, and communicative um, with uh, her process and what, what she's doing. Um, I'm excited about uh, the possibility of property values incre- increasing there. Um, and um, one of the concerns that they brought, brought about before was, was noise level, but it's right next to a, to a train, all of, all of us neighbors are u- used to hearing loud noises. Um, so it's not a concern for, 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 for me, so I just wanted to uh, voice that, that her uh, closest resident is in full support, and um, I'd like to see it approv- approved.
Thank you.
Any questions? Cool.
Lisa Cholet, seventy-four twenty-four, Home Stretch Drive, um, I live on the east side. Um, but I have intimate knowledge of this project, simply because I also sit on the planning commission. Um, and I'm, I don't have a problem with the concept, but as someone who has stood before a liquor licensing board in Fort Collins, which frankly is a lot more difficult than the board here in Wellington, one of the things that is brought to mind is the integrity of the applicant, and I'm not saying she doesn't have integrity. I just question the process um, that none of the things that were originally put in the Board of Adjustments is being required, and yet here we are, getting ready to give a liquor license to someone who, aside from a fence, has done nothing to address parking concerns, ADA requirements, and a bunch of other things. And I understand she went to the Board of Adjustments, and that is her right. But in front of the planning commission, it was made very clear to us that the intention was for it to be primarily an event space, which isn't approved in the zoning, and that lacks integrity, if that's still the case, and she's not saying that. So I would like for her to say on the record that her intention is to be open every Saturday and every Sunday, barring a holiday or some tragedy, that she can't be open, and that it's not a primarily event space, because otherwise that's very disingenuous, and that's my biggest concern, is what we heard prior and where we're standing now. So that's all I really have to say about that, otherwise I support her.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Bryce Hediger, I am a fourth-generation farmer here in town. Uh, I've been here thirty-five years, I suppose. Uh, I think that, would you say your name, please?
Trustee Moyer.
Moyer. I think Moyer made the case as well as anyone for this, when she started earlier today, saying that as a community, we need to encourage new businesses here and unique businesses. Uh, obviously, we're trying to grow our community here, we've done a great job in the last couple of years, making business popular downtown. As people are moving here, I think we need to keep as much money in this community as possible, and not in Fort Collins, and not in Cheyenne, and by having spaces where citizens can come and spend money and be part of the community. And by having spaces where citizens can come and spend money and be part of the community is crucial, in my opinion. And it's also fun that we're doing this in a building that's pretty much older than this town in all honesty, and we're not in all honesty, building new buildings that maybe don't look as nice or not as part of our community. And I would also like to comment on Twyla as a human. You know, as a farmer, the unfortunate truth is that it's a male dominated industry. And to be a 35-year-old blonde girl and to enter into agriculture with the name Twyla is an uphill battle. You don't know what difficulty it is till you've done that. And for her to take on the challenges she's taken on really shows character to me, and I think that's the type of people we need to be encouraging in this community and not pushing away and trying to put their businesses in other places. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cassidy Willis. I live here in Wellington. So as somebody with stellac disease, I have to live a really strictly gluten-free lifestyle. So that often makes me go to Fort Collins and Denver and farther to try to find good safe options that aren't cross-contaminated. So I'm really excited that there would be a dedicated gluten-free brewery and taproom here because I would save a lot of gas money, but also be able to enjoy drinks and more time in the town that we live in. And I will say too that I've had the pleasure of getting to know Twyla and helping her with various projects around the well. The gluten-free community is pretty tight-knit, so I definitely think that this business would put Wellington even more on the map than it is and bring a lot of consumers here, especially if we can really showcase and highlight the great products that she's going to be offering. So I think it'd be great for our community. I think it would keep business here. And she's really been outstanding. I would be happy to attest for her character. She's been incredibly genuine to me and very, very generous and very honest. So I hope that she gets the support she deserves. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Zach Yundra. I've had the honor of knowing Twyla. Our kids went to school together. And actually, in 2008, I lived in the house right behind where that grain bin is, which was a crazy turn of events because then 16 years later, I've been working on the project, which is wild. It's like, that's my old house right there. I live outside of La Port now, so I'm not a Wellington resident anymore. Hope you don't hate me for that. But I know that if I was still living here, I used to work in the kitchen at Beauregard's forever ago, and I would have been so pumped to have that grain bin be in a cool place to go. I know that's going to be a spot for us because our family, we, you know, Fort Collins, we don't always love going to Fort Collins. Parking's a pain, and I think having another option for all of the communities that are north of Fort Collins, La Port. My parents live off Owl Canyon Road in 287 area. My sister lives north of La Port. We have a lot of family in the area. And having something else here in a very iconic building that is beautifully done inside, it's a really cool spot. It's just really exciting. So I'm so pumped to have Twyla getting to this point, and I can't wait to come spend some money in the community. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further public comment, I will now close the public hearing for this item, time being 7:05 p.m. Does the applicant wish to present or a rebuttal or any further comments? Okay. Any further comments or recommendations from staff?
No comments from me, Mr. Mayor, pending anything else from Mr. Sapienza or Penny.
Do I hear a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve the application for the Brew Pub City License for Get Well LLC doing business as the well in Wellington Brew Pub City License.
I will second pending discussion.
Second, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Comments from the board on this?
Thank you. First of all, I'm very in favor of any business startup. I'm very in favor of a brew pub. That's a beautiful building there. Been in it many times. I think it'd be a great addition to the town. I do have some concerns about the process leading to this point of, you know, and maybe Cody can help clarify some of this of what was the intent of going to the Planning Commission to begin with? And then withdrawn and then going straight to the Board of Adjustments? Maybe I'm a little confused, but I would think that Board of Adjustments would be, if there's restrictions on what you want to do there, the Board of Adjustments is where you go to have those concerns hurt. I'm also concerned that, you know, we've got, as I mentioned before, you know, there was agreements in place about about some of the structure, the parking, the infrastructure, the, you know, and so forth. So I'm concerned about that, and I'd like to get a little clarity on that. Again, I'm not opposed to granting a liquor license, but I would like to know if if we're approving something while there's still outstanding issues that are floating out there without any kind of recourse to go back, because that's what I saw for years on this property. So I'd like to have maybe a little more discussion about that.
I have a quick just question. Given that this is a public, or this is a hearing, my concerns are, we heard in public comment, the concerns of the process to a planning commission and adjustments. But before us within this hearing, I don't think that there's been any evidence brought to us about previous agreements on the property or anything like that. So I just want to be super cautious if that's the case and that was not presented as part of this hearing, that we do not consider it because that would be outside the evidence that we've received. So I just want some information on that, just to make sure that we're seeing kosher and considering this correctly.
I think that's a pretty good point, Trustee Daly. And I also want to reiterate that this board is the Liquor License Board. The Board of Adjustment has a process and they hold public hearings. Decisions of the Board of Adjustment, whatever they may be, there's a process for appealing that and this board can't overturn those decisions. I mean, so for the Liquor License Board to be second guessing, the Board of Adjustments really doesn't have authority to do that. What's in front of this board today is an application for a brew pub. A brew pub is defined under our land use code. It's defined under state statute. It's it's a retail establishment. The manufacturer's not more than 1,860 gallons of malt liquor on its premise and and has on-premise sales. That's what's in front of this board tonight. The questions for approval of a liquor license are, one, the board needs to consider the needs and desires of the neighborhood provided by evidence, and that's what the public hearing is about, is about that evidence. And that's back to Trustee Daly's point. This is a public hearing and decisions here need to be based on the evidence before the board. So those past agreements, I don't have, I've never even seen those, so I can't speak to that at all. So now we're bringing up items that I don't know that we have. And I'm not sure they could be considered here today in terms of this liquor license application.
Thank you for your clarity.
And I would be happy to discuss those further with you at another time, and I'm interested to look into them as well. But in terms of land use decisions and that sort of thing, that's really not the purview of the Liquor License Board.
Just to throw it out there, we did hear in this hearing questions from residents about the zoning and the use, and so I still have those trepidations myself.
Chris Wiegand?
I'm excited about seeing that opening. I would like some clarification from Ms. Soles about when she's going to be opening, that it isn't just going to be for events. I know there are some concerns about that. And if we're looking at, you know, being opened up every Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, or whatever, what is her hours going to be at that point? And just like they were saying, just kind of having that on record, and I'd like to see that, if you could.
As I've mentioned, Grouse Malt House is the main business that we operate. It's a 24/7 hour manufacturing business, and that is absolutely my priority as the CEO of that company. In working on getting the well in Wellington open, our goal is to be open on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and hopefully holidays. You know, to say that we're going to be open unless, I guess I just, I don't feel like I need to swear to be open all the time. That is not, that is not our intention to be open every day. I can be honest with you about that. It's really tough to run a small business, especially a retail business, which is why we see so many of them closing right now. And I just really appreciate your support with being able to get open and establish a business at that, a retail business at that location. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Mr. Sapienza, this might be a question for you. I don't know, I don't personally know whether there are outstanding action items from the applicant that need to be fulfilled, that came from the Board of Adjustments. Are there? And I guess my question is more to the fact of, if we approve a license tonight, does that mean that the business owner can go ahead and operate if those other fulfillments have not been made?
If you approve an application tonight, the applicant is still going to need to receive a certificate of occupancy and be able to occupy the building in compliance with our land use code and our building codes. I don't know the status of that at this time. As I said, tonight is not about land use decisions, so.
Thank you, that clears up.
They have to comply with all other laws of the town.
Mr. Daly?
I understand this is a complex situation, and believe me, I get that. But given the task before us determining whether or not it's suitable for the neighborhood, I've heard overwhelming support, including their petitions that they brought from the neighborhood, as well as someone who is an existing business owner in our community, and I believe is capable of this. So I know there's a lot of other aspects and that might have to do with more of, you know, patrons and, you know, those kind of things. So but given the task before us, I think this decision is very clear, so I hope that we can vote on this.
Thank you. I'm right along the lines with that, Trustee Daly. Ms. Garcia? May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
No.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Onto the next item before the board is a license renewal application for Don John LLC DBA Wellington Grill. Will staff please introduce this item?
Evening again, Mr. Mayor and Board. This is Ethan Moose, your town clerk. Don John LLC doing business as Wellington Grill submitted their annual renewal application for their hotel and restaurant city liquor license. And staff accepted this license as complete on the 20th of May. We've also confirmed the applicant has a current sales tax license and is in possession of a certificate of good standing issued by the Colorado Secretary of State. Excuse me, although the applicant identified themselves as a property owner in the renewal application, they provided clarifying information regarding legal possession of their premises via an executive lease agreement. Although the applicant entity does not directly own the premise, they do have legal permission to use it. Laramie County Sheriff's Office conducted an inspection of the premises and reported that inspection has been included in the packet, although there were initially some issues identified in that inspection. The Laramie County Sheriff's Office has further coordinated with the applicant for a reinspection and have addressed each of those issues. Because of that fact, staff recommend that the renewal application for the applicant be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any general questions from the board on this item? No, okay. Are there any comments from the public on this? No. Any final questions or direction from the board on this item? No.
I think it's an extremely well-run organization and definitely I'm for this.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on this item? Motion to approve the liquor license renewal?
I'll second.
Any final discussion? No. Ms. Garcia, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teats? It's not a public hearing. Okay. Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, the last item for the Liquor License Authority Board is a special event liquor permit application. Since this is a special event liquor permit application, we will hold a public hearing on this item. To begin, are there any conflicts of interest or expertise communications that members of the board wishes to disclose? No. Staff, please introduce this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. Again, Ethan Moose, your town clerk, American Legion Wellington Post 176, submit an application for a special event liquor permit. And the town accepted the application as complete on the 21st of May of this year. We've also verified the applicant is exempt from sales tax licensure requirements as a nonprofit corporation and that the applicant possesses a certificate of good standing issued by the Colorado Secretary of State. The applicant's received permission from the property owner, the town's Parks and Recs Department for the event and has provided an event diagram and safety plan. Staff recommend that you hold a public hearing on this application to determine the sufficiency of the applicant's safety plan and control measures and whether the issuance of a special event liquor permit for this application would be in any way injurious to public welfare because of the nature of the special event, its location within community, or the failure of the applicant in a past special event to conduct the event in compliance with applicable law. The only discrepancy that I would sort of highlight here regarding the application document specifically is that though the application document does indicate that from the applicant, they do not have permission to use the premise. Through the process of processing their application, they received it, and so the board should feel comfortable understanding that the applicant does indeed have permission, excuse me, for use of the premise Centennial Park. If you find that the applicant's safety plan and control measures are sufficient through the course of this public hearing and that the application would not be injurious to public welfare for the reasons mentioned, staff would recommend approval of this special event liquor. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to present on this item? Are there any general questions from the board on this item?
What's the event, by the way? Am I missing something?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July.
Yeah.
You're good. Nothing further there? Okay. I now open the public hearing on this item, time being 7:19 p.m. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item, please sign in the sheet behind the podium, state your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes. Going once, going twice, sold. All right, seeing no further public comment, and now close the public hearing on this item, time being 7:20 p.m. Does the applicant wish to present a rebuttal? Any further comment? Any further comments or recommendations from staff?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve the application for special event liquor permit.
I second.
Any further discussion from the board on this item?
They do an amazing job and we're very lucky to have their service to our community.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think they confronted a lot of the different items last year with ADA compliance and all that, and the security, the tips and all that, so they're very well-run. So appreciate it.
All right.
Yeah, I just want to thank Post 176 for putting this on for us every year. This is a very important piece to our Fourth of July celebration. I know a lot of members of our community really enjoy having the beer garden out there, and so thank you, guys sincerely.
All right, Ms. Garcia, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I will now close the Liquor License Authority Board, time being 6:21 PM, and reopen 7:21 PM. Don't know what happened there. And reopen the regular meeting, Board of Trustees, time being 7:21 PM. All right, next we will have a presentation from the town's Public Works team on the plant expansion project status update.
Whose computer are we using? Want to be promoted to panelists. Yeah, well, it just would have.
Man, Mr. You're, you're looking snazzy.
Joining as a panelist.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. I'm Bob Galling, the Director of Public Works. I'm going to give a brief introduction to this item to kind of hopefully put it in context a little bit. There's a lot of information in this presentation. I know it might be a little overwhelming, but the reason why we're giving this presentation now is that we're, we're kind of getting to the point where we know or have a decent idea where we're going to be at the end of these two expansion projects. And with budget season coming up and the financial analysis for the enterprise funds coming up, where we're going to end up at the end of this year is a pretty important number, especially when you consider that we've achieved considerable amount of savings through these projects. So, a lot of data in here, as I said, but the, but the bottom line is, is kind of in the executive summary there. Want to present kind of how we got here on the projects, but also give some preliminary information on where we're, where we think we're going to be at the end of the day on this project and approximately how much money we might be able to bring home from these two projects and what that might mean for the, for the future of the, the two enterprise funds as well as the town at large. So, this was kind of a joint effort. So, I'm going to hand it over to the two project managers on this project, Dave Meyer and Nathan Ewart, who've both done standout work on this project and they'll be kind of making the main presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Trustees. Nathan Ewart with Engineering. So, as Bob said, you know, Dave and I both manage a project, but Megan Smith, the Deputy Director, has done a lot of work on the project and then obviously the plant staff, right? We're basically going to be operating two plants here in about a week, especially at the water plant, wastewater plant's coming up. Those, that staff out there is working, you know, daily with the contractor, making things happen on schedule, helping them out, keeping things moving for us. So, those guys and that entire team, both teams are doing an incredible job for us out there. A little background, I mean, I could, I can go into detail. I think we all know the issues that the town has with the water, the taste and odor issues, the capacity limitations, both on the water plant side and on the wastewater plant side or the water reclamation facility side as far as treatment capacity. So, to keep a kind of high level of where we, where, where we were and where we're going, September 2020, town entered into a contract with Jacobs Engineering Group to design a new water treatment plant as well as provide construction services during construction. Then in December 2020, town entered into contract with Jacobs Engineering Group, again for designing construction services of the water reclamation facility. Prior to all of this, before my time here at the town, in 2018, Hansel Phelps was brought on as the C Mar contractor for the construction of the water treatment plant. C Mar is Construction Manager at Risk. Sorry, I know that. Construction Manager at Risk, which is just a type of procurement and delivery for these types of large projects. Then in June 2021, Moltz Construction was, was contracted for a C Mar contract to construct the water reclamation facility. Part of the C Mar project is the contractors provide what's called a guaranteed maximum price, GMP, which you get prior to 100% design. So, you actually get it delivered to you at 90% design. In this case, the water treatment plant, the GMP was about 32, $35 million and the water reclamation facility was about $48 million. And those, this is the important part, those are inclusive of 5% owner and 5% contractor contingency amounts, which is what Dave is going to be speaking about here later on when we talk about savings. Following up on that, the water treatment plant entered into a construction, you know, final contract or final construction contract with Hansel Phelps in March 29th of 2022. And the water reclamation facility contract was approved by the Board in February 10th of 2022. Let's talk about funding for a little bit. The water treatment plant, as you're all aware, was partially funded through an SRF loan. The loan amount is $24.8 million, so that means that the remainder of the construction costs is coming out of the town's Water Enterprise Fund. The, the water reclamation facility is also funded through SRF loans. However, it is fully funded. We have two loans for that project. One is a $45.5 million SRF loan and the other is a $3 million green project reserve loan. Okay, so, moving on to schedule. Notice to proceed at the water plant was issued on May 17th of 2022. The original substantial completion date, which is when the new water treatment plant is supposed to be making water for beneficial use for the town, was originally scheduled to be May 6th of 2024. We're already past that date. We've had some delays on the project. We've had 13 weather delays. Last year was a very wet year, it made digging and everything else outside very difficult. We've had several unplanned events, which is a little bit vague. It's a little bit of a contractor term, but it accounts for things such as deviations in bedrock that were shown on plans, so we had to modify some foundation designs. It accounts for, we had some groundwater issues. Some other items that we've had, a design change had to occur at the water plant, which then had to go back to CDPE for review and approval. And that took basically all of, all of the fall to get that through. And then lastly, the other delays, as we've kind of alluded to, every month in our monthly project report is equipment and material procurement delays. A lot of that is related to AIS, the American Iron and Steel Requirements. We are still getting a few COVID delays. That's an interesting, yeah. That's still out there, believe it or not. So, taking all those into account, the new revised substantial completion date for the water treatment plant is June 24th, 2024. And Dave and I sat across the table today and asked the contractor, do you feel comfortable? And they said, yes, we feel very comfortable with that date. So, that one is, that one's looking good. And then the original final completion date on that project was July 29th, 2024. And the revised final completion date is August 14th of 2024. The water reclamation facility notice to proceed was issued on May 17th, 2022. The original substantial completion date was August 1st of 2024. And now the revised completion date is October 30th, 2020. Substantial completion date is October 30th of 2024. Again, the, the delay to the project is accounting for weather. We had 12 weather days out there. We had equipment and material procurement delays, the same items, the American Iron and Steel requirements, the COVID delays, you know, we ordered MCCs and it's taken two years for them to get here. That type of thing has come up. But on this project specifically, we did have some added scope, which has pushed the substantial completion date as well as the final completion date out. And Dave's going to go into additional detail on those added scope items for this project. Finally, the, the original final completion was October 30th of 2024 and now the revised final completion date is June 13th of 2025. And with that, Dave gets it.
Thank you, Nathan. I'm Dave Meyer, other co, co-project manager for the expansion projects. Thanks, Nathan. So, as Nathan said, keeping it at kind of a higher level here, a lot of information in your packet. Can we talk a little bit about the budgets on both plants? Water treatment plant first. So, as part of the C Mar delivery process, we have what's called at the water plant, which a contractor is Hansel Phelps, potential change orders. These are all components of the C Mar process. Those are spelled out, excuse me, in the contingencies that were part of the contract. 5% of the contract price, 1.5 million for the owner to spend, 5%, 1.5 million for the contractor's use. At this point in the water treatment pro, project, we have had 22 contractor PCOs and 50 owner PCOs that have crossed our desk and we have since approved. On top of that, we have, as mentioned in your package, we have about a half a dozen more, plus or minus, that we're still looking at right now. Considering the numbers that we have on those right now, we're projecting at this time about $750,000 to $800,000 in those contingency savings, total money, which will be returned back to the town. Want to stipulate the final amount, monies being returned to the town will be spelled out at the final completion, which now is middle part of August. For the water reclamation facility, wastewater plant, instead of calling them PCOs, we're calling them PCIs. That's been a source of confusion for the last two years. Potential contingency items that that stands for. Same kind of structure, part of the C Mar process. 5% or 2.1, 2.2 million for the owner contingencies. 5% 2.2 million for the contractor contingencies. Thus far, at the wastewater plant, we've had 20 PCIs bought before us and approved and signed, 14 owner PCIs bought before us and signed. With those PCIs, we were projecting at that time about 2.4 million under the GMP remaining in those contingencies. With that, we took a look at the upcoming budget for the next five years, a CIP, five-year CIP. You know, note that we have the orbital rehabilitation currently in the five-year CIP. I think it's about $800,000 for this year and roughly $400,000 or so for, for next year. What staff has decided was to allocate the remaining contingencies to fulfill that orbital rehabilitation project, essentially removing now that, those costs from the five-year CIP. That was granted to Moltz, the contractor, about a month ago. So, with that, as Nathan mentioned on the schedule, that postponed the final completion date until June of next year for completion at, of that orbital rehab project. Accounting for all of those numbers, at this time, we're projecting about $340,000 still remaining in contingency, that's as of today. Want to caveat that by saying we still got several months left in the project at the wastewater plant. On top of that, going back to the loan monies that Nathan mentioned, we have about $600,000 remaining loan funds to expand. We are discussing possibly reimbursing some of our past engineering fees to cover those remaining loan monies. So, where we're at at the water treatment plant, you could see my smile forming here. Very exciting. We are sending water through the plant, starting today. We're not processing it and sending it to the distribution system. I wanted to get a video for you all, but time didn't allow me to do that. Exciting times at the water treatment plant after a four-year effort, four-plus-year effort. A lot of equipment, startups are taking place this week and last week, last three weeks. Contractor and the operators are working on some punch list items right now and a heck of a lot of operator equipment training. As Nathan mentioned, the plant operators out there have been phenomenal with this training, learning a lot, attending all of the sessions. So, exciting times at the water plant. In a few months from now, we're going to have the same exciting times at the reclamation facility. Right now, the contractor, Moltz, is mostly working indoors. All the exterior work is pretty much done. Upcoming milestones include power forward. That's a fancy way of saying that all the electrical power will be available to start up all the systems. That's going to happen later this month. We already have some of the new facilities online, the new digesters, five and six. We added two digestors to the, to the plant. We had to take down a few of the existing digestors because we wanted to do some rehabilitation work on those as part of the project. So, those have been working. We have startup activities beginning the end of July and throughout the summer with substantial completion of the wastewater plant in October of this year, before October of this year. Key takeaways while we're here today, just to announce where we're at with the substantial completion dates. Again, the water treatment plant set for June 24th, that's a week from next Monday. The substantial completion for the reclamation facility is October 1st of this year, a few months from now. Fiscal benefits, as we mentioned, and Bob had alluded to, at this point, we are anticipating savings of about $750,000 to $800,000 in the water treatment plant expansion. We had 2.4 million in savings. We allocated about 2 million of that to the orbital expansion at the wastewater plant. And we also have some monies left, loan monies left for possible reimbursement of engineering fees. With that, we have most of the key people here on the project. We can take any questions and hopefully provide you answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Moore?
Can, hi, thank you. That is very, very exciting. I feel like we've all been waiting for these moments for a long time, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I do have a question about the reimbursement of the engineering fees from the loan and then the additional $750,000 to $800,000 of savings. Can you explain to me how that translates?
So, I'll start on that, Bob, step in. So, we have not submitted any of our engineering fees. This is through Jacobs for the wastewater plant to the state for reimbursement. We took out the loan solely for construction services for Moltz. As the project went, had been nearing completion the last few months, we looked at the budget again and we talked with the state. We determined we're not going to use all of the loan monies we took out for that project, about $600,000. And there's reasons why we set those amounts, I can get into those if you want. But we have a question on how we would spend the rest of those monies. One of the things the state had offered to us is reimbursement of engineering fees that we paid Jacobs over the past two years or so. I think there was about up to $1 million that we, that we are eligible for reimbursement. Of course, we don't have $1 million available to get reimbursed from, but that's an option that we're looking at right now. I think, Bob, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not ready to make that decision now because we still have several months left on this project, but it's an option in our back pocket.
And really, the, the bottom line is that we're, we're paying this debt service anyway, right? So, we took out the loan and there are some options to kind of buy down future interest, I think, at the end of the loan. But as we all know, the, both of these. But as we all know, the both of these funds are kind of bouncing along the bottom right now. So basically, we're kind of reinjecting those total amounts that Dave gave you back into the fund balance is what's what's really the net effect. When we reimburse engineering fees that we've already paid cash for out of the fund balance, this will kind of make some of that disappear. Hopefully, it'll be half a million, 600,000, something like that. But the orbital is already in the five-year plan for 2 million. That just disappears as an expense and it totally gets absorbed into the water reclamation plant, existing appropriation. So all those monies are already appropriated, so we'll be able to basically just kind of delete about two and a half million dollars worth of appropriation and/or existing expenses in one fell swoop. So that's just like an injection of cash into the fund is is really how it nets out. And on the water side, we we're not, and the numbers are more impressive on the wastewater side, there's no doubt. But we do have, what was it, 600,000 or no, 750 to 800,000? That will have the same general effect, it just kind of is just cash that you can think of, but it's just cash going straight to the bottom line in the fund, so all good.
Thank you. That's good news to all of us.
Trusty Teets?
Hello, and yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I am so extremely excited to see this finally coming to fruition and seeing our board being able to be a part of getting to see it come to the finality. Again, this kind of planning is never done as we grow. But I feel that how we've set things up over the last two years and moving forward, we're going to see a lot more successes related to funds coming in, to funds going out for those CIP funds for additional expansions. I know when we'd first discussed this, that those contingency funds, we were hoping that those leftovers would be something that could get credited towards an account. I know that was something that was discussed by, um, John Gator when he was sitting as a trustee. So it'd be awesome to be able to see some of those funds go allocated to that wastewater side of it. Because I know that 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 fund sometimes does fall into the lower amounts. So other than that, I'm extremely grateful. I'm happy that our residents are going to get to see some better smelling, better tasting water. But the fact that we have additional water that we can provide is a very large kudos for the new businesses that are wanting to open up and move into town. So I'm grateful for all of the public works, the engineers and all of the additional companies that have paired with the town of Wellington to make sure that we're delivering clean water. And I would love to see those additional funds, if we are allowed to allocate those, go towards offsetting the cost of those engineering fees, that would be wonderful. And I'm looking forward to seeing the final product when everything's up and online and getting to see where you guys started and now where it ends.
Thank you, Trusty Teets. Trusty Wigan?
I want to thank you for the presentation and, you know, it is amazing when you see the public sector and the private sector working together so well. And, uh, coming underneath budget and something like this, especially with all the crazy stuff that's been happening the last two years with the supply chain shortages and all that. And, uh, you know, COVID and, you know, interest rates going crazy. I mean, I think you guys did a fantastic job of planning, pre-planning. And I think you're putting the city or the town in a great position now. Appreciate everything you guys have done.
Thank you. Trust Keenan?
I think this was a great presentation, thank you so much. This goes back beyond 2022, this goes back 2017. You know, we had to go through a procedure with with an engineering firm that was ultimately fired. And, uh, I am excited to see, we are so close to completing that water treatment plant. I know of all the the hiccups along the way and, uh, I want to thank Bob, you and your team and the Board of Trustees who worked to make this work.
There's left for you though, Trusty Wigan. I think if you do, uh, you'll get wet. Thank you, Trust Keenan. Trusty Daly?
This has been quite the roller coaster of a of entire project. And, you know, it comes to the cost of pretty much every rate player in the town, just to make sure that we are in a place where we are taking care of public safety and planning for investing in our future. Something that's never been questionable though, or up and down, is, um, our staff's commitment to using money wisely and saving money at every opportunity and making smart choices to serve the community. So I do want to commend you for that and always, um, with the commitment of serving our town in its best capacity. So thank you so much.
Murpro Tim?
Well, I just want to say thank you, guys, this this is absolutely incredible. You know, for something to come in, uh, on time, mostly on time and under budget, certainly under budget, is is absolutely incredible. You know, as far as government projects go, so, um, I, this is, this is pretty good stuff because, I mean, you know, and certainly thank you to the prior boards. Getting this going is probably the most important thing that we are going to see for Wellington for the next 25-plus years. So this is, I I can't stress that enough, I'm I'm very excited. I would love to have the first glass of water that comes out of that sucker. And, uh, and I just want to certainly thank, thank you to the staff, thank you to the operators. Those guys are beating, just, you know, getting after it and, uh, you know, getting trained up on these things, it's it's very important stuff. So I'm super excited and and thank you guys for the presentation.
Thank you very much for the presentation, every single one of you bust your tails. And before the project began, getting everything lined up, working with engineers, the companies, everything. I mean, I commend you guys on that, I commend the operators, although everybody boots on the ground, right? The guys that are running the plants. It's not easy, especially running those while doing a construction project and in switching them halfway. And, I mean, my hat's off to then you guys all around. Without you guys, we wouldn't be able to have clean drinking water, so I appreciate that and, um, everything you guys do, so thank you.
All right, next we will have a Prost update. Mr. Billy Cooksey and the rec manager.
Waiting to.
Are you, are you handing this presentation off to? Nice. It's the green button I hear.
Yep, there it is. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'm Billy Cooksey, manager of the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the staff liaison for the town for the Prost Advisory Board, Parks, Rec, Open Spaces and Trails. Tonight, we're going to do an update presentation for you all. For the Prost Board, I have with me John Evans, a very dedicated, long-term Prost member, willing to come up here and do the presentation on behalf of Prost, so I thank him for that. He wants to speak with you. Before we start, I just wanted to say thanks to all the Prost members. We have a very dedicated and passionate group, um, wanting to just enhance all the offerings we have. Not just in parks and recreation, but building community as well, uh, working with partnerships, businesses, all the local entities that we we do work with on the Parks and Rec side, Prost is coming in to kind of wrap their arms around them as well and be part of that. So thanks to John for being here. Aaron McConnell is in attendance, and then I believe a couple of them are on Zoom right now, so, um, those who couldn't make it. So thank you to all of them, and it's been fantastic working with them and kind of working forward and progressing in the future. So I'll leave it to Mr. Evans.
You want to?
Yes, I will.
I'm gonna leave my, uh, update pretty brief here. And just kind of hit the high points, you guys have the information in your packets, but, you know, we we give you our vision and, uh, mission here. But in general, it's it's more engaging with the community and figuring out needs. And, um, it doesn't really say everything, we always look at it every couple, every year, every couple of years and try to tweak it and mend it. But in general, it's just the dedication, um, of the board trying to find ways to engage the community and figure out what the needs are. So, uh, with our current projects, um, we've got some things that are going to show up again in this, uh, update. But like the bike fix stations are going in, we're finding more ways to get ADA restrooms out there, more accessibility. In general, and that'll come up again too with other projects as far as the trails go. So I'll breeze right through that one. You have a list of our priorities, so we always come up with a wish list and it's right now, what can we do, what can we do this year, let's look next year, and then big, long-term things. So you can see a lot of them are accessibility, there's some ADA stuff in there, there's trail stuff. The, um, drainage and the underpass is on there. But I don't want to focus too much past 2024 because we have probably one of our largest items on 2024, which is our Parks Master Plan. And I think that would help us align with this board's outlook with the town and with what's been already set aside by previous boards to align our efforts and to figure out easier what the town needs and what the residents actually want in our parks and our recreation programs. So I'm going to talk about that again here in a bit, but like Billy said, you know, we meet with, um, some of the other groups, we work with Kiwanis a lot, we do work with Legion, we've we've met with Boys and Girls Club, um, School District, everybody. We go through a lot of planning to try to figure out how we can work together. And we put on events, so we do pretty much every event that the town of Wellington does, you will see Parks and Rec there. They will have their park and plays up, they will have a booth up, there will be engagement with the community. And there's been a lot of what ends up on our list because of events like that. You know, we're doing roundtables, we're doing, um, surveys, uh, we're just getting input from people wherever we can, and that's what ends up being on our list. But again, moving forward, that master plan is more of what we can set the future towards. It's not just what we want, it's what we need. So we know we want a rec center, everybody wants a rec center, we want a pool. We want certain amenities at parks, but what do we need? And we can't get all that without the master plan. So we put that as one of our high priorities. And then in here also, you're going to get an update on our, uh, Veterans Memorial, that we have been to Legion meeting and we've discussed with some, uh, members of the community. And so at the phase we are now, we're looking at surveying and figuring out if we're outside of the floodplain. And then once that goes forward, we can start figuring out funding and any kind of donations we can round up, the grant writing, and figuring out how to get that off the ground. And we are hearing a lot of things that are very positive about the project right now. So we think that once we get the engineering, the surveying done, you're going to start seeing more progress and we can come to you with more updates. And our fantastic liaison will definitely bring that to you. So there's two projects coming up here on the next two slides and they kind of go hand in hand. So in our future projects, we've always heard that the east side is unaccommodized, they don't have enough over there. And what one thing they've reached out to us about is a dog park. So we have plans to use an unused area or could potentially be unused if we see things go the right direction, to do a pilot program with a dog park on the east side that could hopefully lead into a permanent established dog park. At the moment, it lands in a spot where the disc golf is. But we've also had outreach from the disc golf community that it's not a playable course anymore. I don't know if you've ever been there, but if you look at the the sheets, the pin's not where it actually says it's on the paper anymore. Some of them are actually where backyards are now, and it's not really a playable course. So we've had outreach from that community to do a multi-course, so it involved foot golf. Foot golf is like, uh, frisbee golf with like soccer balls. So it's just a whole nother community that we could get involved and have amenities for people with different passions. So like, we've seen a lot of passion with pickleball and we've reached out to them and found ways that we're trying to get more pickleball access- ability. So it also kind of just reaches out to more more people. And as you can see on that, uh, slide there, it does have ADA approved or accessibility. So it does, again, align with your guys' um, future and what what you're seeing the town want. The good thing about these projects is it actually lines up. We had budgeting for our ADA fishing dock. And luckily to say that we've got grant, we've got grant money. So we'd like to see if at some point in the future, we could figure out a way to redirect the money that was originally put aside and budgeted for that dock to move forward with a project that we could get done again really soon. And find ways that we can continue to make these parks better for the community. And we got the master plan again, because I can't say it enough. We've talked about it with the Prost Board for probably the last five, six years. And, um, we have a grasp study, it's out of date. We need to know how we're going to get people these parks, we need to know what we're going to have in these parks, we need to know when that rec center is coming, when we're going to need it by, what it should be in there and what our community is built like at the time where we need those things, you know, how many people are we serving? Where do we need these parks? And kind of, I don't want to bring up the exact subject, but with things about building in certain areas, there are ways the town can hey, this side of the interstate needs a certain thing, you know, we don't have basketball courts over there. You know, so we can use these developments of the projects and what we've seen in the past of being those opportunities to provide those services. And in the end, um, involvement. We have two openings now, um, and I know we have two new trustees. Welcome and congratulations, by the way. We'd love to see you at our meeting. Come join us, see what we do on our regular meetings and, um, look forward to getting engaged and figuring out how we can get some more of these projects done.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions, any questions? Tom? Yeah, go for it, Trusty.
The Prost Board is amazing, it's one of my favorite advisory boards because they really get in it and they do a lot of great work. So, but what's more important is some of the Prost members have been around longer than I've been involved with the town. And what comes with that is understanding board after board after board. They find themselves in a place where they have to fight for the right to represent the town for Parks, Recs, Open Space and Trails. So every single new board comes around and they have to pretty much sell everything that's park and rec and all of the amenities that serves every single one of our, uh, one of our residents. What could, and the continuity between that is what's really, really frustrating for them because they know what needs to happen, they know when it needs to happen. But we don't see progress. And if every two years they're being put back further and further and none of that information is passing along, we are doing them an injustice and all the community members that reach out to and participate with Prost an injustice because we're not hearing them or implementing what they want. Now, this group really begs for everything that they need and they look and try to make sure they're feasible projects, and I think that's wonderful. But without a park- But without a Parks and Rec master plan, there will continue to be no continuity. And that is the number one plea. I mean, John's made it very, very clear, but I need to reiterate this, that I've heard this so many times, that until we have a plan, we don't know what to recommend to those development, new developments. We don't know anything to move forward, and we don't have a plan. So, if any message I can bring from Prost, among many, because they have many, many good ideas, is the master plan has to happen for them to be successful, for the town of Wellington to be successful. So, I just want to advocate for them on that, on their behalf, because that is a very, very clear message that they have sent. And thank you for the presentation.
Tracy Moore.
Yeah, thank you to the Prost Board and Billy, your leadership. I am a mom of four kids, well, one man-child, three kids, and I am just so grateful for the amenities we do have, and I absolutely hear the need for a plan and support that, for sure. So, thank you for everything that you're doing, and just keep it up.
Tracy Teetz.
Yes, hello. I was, got a few tidbits. I've been able to be in Wellington now, I want to say I'm 21-plus years. So, and I have had seen massive things come to our town as far as parks, recreation, even having an opportunity to participate in a sport. For many, many years, we had to drive to Fort Collins just to participate in baseball or football. So, just having that availability and having those options here locally is wonderful. I think that, and I can say this wholeheartedly, five years of sitting in trustee meetings and sitting on one side and sitting in a seat as a trustee, I have seen parks be supported by previous trustee board members. I have seen people support these programs and love the fact that they don't have to travel out of Wellington to accomplish a lot of things anymore. So, I love where we are now compared to where we were. I would agree that a master plan is a great idea. The other option that I would also like to look at is if we do have excessive funds or funds that could be applied somewhere, we have a drastically growing list of updates that need to be done and fixes that need to be done to the parks that already exist now. So, I would ask that if we do have additional funds and we can look at updating and fixing what we have, and that's pour in places in all of the parks, I know that was one of the goals of Prost there for a while. But just in general, doing the fixes to the ones we have now before we add to and create more things that need fixed, I don't know, Billy, do you happen to have like a running tally of repairs that need met in each community park?
No, there's no real capital depreciation schedule for parks. I am in the process of working with a contractor who's building out kind of a GIS mapping, so we can take account of all of our assets and actually put value to them, because there's nothing like that that we have. We are working on that right now, and actually, we had a first beta test of that. So, we will be going out and capturing all of our amenities, and that will be anything from underground, like irrigation in our wells and everything like that, to everything above ground that you see in the parks. That's gonna take a little while, but at the start of it, we will be able to gain some depreciation on the things that we have, because we'll be able to go back in time, see when they were actually purchased and where we're at.
Got it. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a lot of equipment that we have purchased that you can't order parts for anymore.
Absolutely, yes.
Got it. So, that would kind of be one thing when we are looking at having excessive funds, maybe not so much doing extra at this time, but making sure that what we have is actually functional. I think there for a while, Park Meadows, you couldn't slide down the slides because they were broken. So, just making sure that we maintain what we have and use any additional funds to go that way first before we add additional features or options. Infrastructure's important, and I would love to know where we sit as far as what actual costs are to have to fix what we have. So, that, that would be my request. I'm extremely grateful to the Prost Board for everything they do do. I would love to see the Parks Master Plan come to us in the 2025 budget planning. But other than that, thank you for everything you do. Billy, you respond to me in a moment's notice whenever a resident reaches out with me with a question, even if it's at eight something at night. So, I am very grateful that you are as responsive as you are when it comes to taking care of things in our community that involve the Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Tracy Ween.
Yeah, got it. Just a quick question. Do we have any work sessions set to work directly with these guys so we can work on a master plan together? I think if we have a collaboration, that would possibly help.
It'll come up in the budget, in your budget discussions. It will be included in the 2025 proposed budget, more than likely, and that will be the time to talk about it a little bit more.
Okay, cool.
And then, if we move forward with that, then there will be a lot of community input and collaboration. It's, it's, it's a deal.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, if we work together,
Yes.
both boards together here, you know, we're gonna have a good idea where we want to go, what everybody has in mind, and, you know, then we can take it out to the public at that point. And then, we're gonna have an idea what the cost is gonna be too, I would presume, correct?
Yeah, right. Yeah, so we would basically be talking about adding it to our budget for next year.
Right.
And then, those processes would begin next year of engaging the public and putting the master plan together and.
Yeah. Shouldn't we have a work session together first, so we got an idea where we want to go to on it?
Billy? I would say we, I would discover on budgeting for what the current Park and Rec master plan would be for a community of our size, what kind of engagement we're looking for, go out to bid for a company to come in and do that, and that's where we would engage that company to do the outreach and work with different boards and, you know, different entities that are involved in both Parks and Recreation events, all the things that would be encompassed in a, in a master plan, as well as the community heavily with the community, because as John said, we're looking for the needs moving forward in the future, and then.
You gotta have a start for the master plan somewhere.
Right, yeah, so budgeting it and then having that collaboration, community effort, yeah.
Thank you. Triscan.
Thank you for the presentation, John. I think you did a great job there. You know, government is boring if all you do is worry about, you know, clean water and plowing the streets and, and, you know, zoning and all that kind of stuff. What, you know, being a political science major, you know, governments are about the public good, and the public good is defined as non-competitive, non-exclusive, and the best example of that is your parks and open space, because you're not, you're providing this as a service to the entire community. It's what builds a community. It's what, it's what people rely on. It's where kids play. It's where, you know, parents and families go and have picnics and walk their dogs and so forth like that. This is very important to the town, and the master plan needs to occur, and so that we have a plan as a town moving forward that spouts out over the next five, 10 years of what the town needs and how to get there and how much it's gonna cost. And then, we need to be on top of that. I think sometimes people have a tendency to think, you know, that's the fluff part of government, but it's not the fluff part of government. It's the essential part of government. It's about providing that service to the community, and what makes Wellington a place you want to live, a place you want to play, a place you want to work, a place where you can go with your neighbors and so forth. So, I'm very excited about this presentation. I thank you so much for putting this together, and I look forward to discussions about the master plan and the budget for next year and getting this project going. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Proton.
Mr. Cooksey, Mr. Evans, appreciate you guys coming down, giving this presentation. I just want to say, I absolutely love the new park signage that's out there. Very cool stuff. Also, congratulations on the grant for the ADA fishing dock. Very, very cool stuff there. So, I did want to hammer home the point you had made about Veterans Memorial donations. I know I've talked to Post 176 and suggested that, hey, we should all collaborate in that and try to get donations out there. There's plenty of people that would love to donate money, myself included. And I, I think, Mr. Evans, you had mentioned something about potentially re-appropriating some funds from the, since we had things, or had the ADA fishing grant come in, that maybe we could re-appropriate funds for the frisbee golf stuff over there. I happen to know that course is unplayable. I've walked it a number of times, and certainly, I would, I would, I would love to give you guys a hand with that. So, certainly bring back a proposal, and we'll see what we can do for you.
I also want to thank you guys for your commitment and involvement in board meetings and investing your time and energies into our parks, and it's important, and planning for our future, this is a huge part of it. And so, I'm, I'm all behind setting together a master plan and getting that set up. So, very exciting stuff. Thank you for everything, and everybody online that couldn't attend, appreciate you as well. So, thanks.
Ms. Garcia, will you please read the title of the items in the consent agenda?
Billy, can you unshare?
Oh, yep.
I can't figure out how to do it. All right, consent agenda. We have the May 28th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Number two, we have resolution number 28-2024, a resolution authorizing the temporary closure of portions of State Highway One, Cleveland Avenue, First Street, Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Sixth Street, Harrison Avenue and Buffalo Creek Parkway within the town of Wellington during the annual 4th of July celebration on July 4th, 2024.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Garcia, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Take a five-minute and return back to the meeting after that. Ms. Garcia, may I take a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here. Thank you. Ms. Garcia, will you please read the title for item F1?
Resolution, resolution number 30-2024, a resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, approving the Town Administrator's Plan of Organization.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, the Town Administrator will present this item. Ms. Garcia.
Do that from here, because there's buttons and things.
Yeah.
And I don't want to, right now, it's kind of, it's working, so I don't want to get up. So, this is, this is a requirement based on our municipal code, section 2-320 subsection E, to propose a plan of organization within 90 days of my appointment. That appointment happened shortly after the, after the swearing-in of the new board. We are within that 90-day requirement. The, the organizational chart that you see in your packet is, is almost identical to what was included in, with the budget. The only change is, is we did change the title of IT technician to IT manager. We were really struggling with filling that position with a qualified applicant, and after discussions with other HR professionals, it was determined that if we brought it up to a higher level, that we could hire someone who had the experience and the knowledge that we needed, and then they could build their own team over the next several years. So, other than that, everything is the same, and very excited to work with this team.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item? Tracy Moore? Tracy Teetz?
Nope. I am excited to see that IT manager get bumped up there. I feel that with the way of cyber attacks and items like that, that having an IT manager and building a team is very smart at this time.
Thank you. Tracy Ween? Triscan? Member Proton? Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Gone once, gone twice, sold. All right. Any final questions, direction from the board? No. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution number 30-2024, resolution approving the Town Administrator's Plan of Administrative Organization.
I'll second.
Ms. Garcia, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. On to reports. Mr. Dan Zappienza, Town Attorney.
No reports at this time?
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, Town Administrator.
So, next week is CML Conference in Loveland. There's some really great sessions, and I really look forward to hearing from all of you what you hear and what you learn from the session speakers in the other municipalities. Our own Ed Can, Trustee Cannon, is on the ballot for the CML Executive Board. So, as you're out talking to people, while you're there, encourage people to vote for Mr. Cannon for that executive board position. The work session for next Tuesday includes presentations on animal control, local election administration, and information related to Senate Bill 24-131, which was that bill prohibiting carrying firearms in sensitive spaces. I want to do a shout-out to the teams that spoke tonight, the, the Public Works Team. I could not be more proud than, than I am right now over the projects and their accomplishments. It has been, talking to other municipalities, they struggle, and we, we've had our internal struggles, but not, this team is just amazing, and we're just really fortunate to have them, along with Prost and Parks and Recreation. Again, you know, always looking for those ways to improve the livelihood for our residents. So, really proud of the team that's been assembled here at the Town of Wellington. And I think that is, oh, I also, it was mentioned by Mr. Carmen tonight about looking at a policy for proclamations, and that was something that I started working on earlier, actually, end of last week, reaching out to the managers listserv and getting a lot of ideas from municipalities across the state. So, I'm starting to put some of those notes together. I'll present that to the Board of Trustees in an upcoming meeting, so you can start talking about that, what that, what that policy might look like. So, we want to have something in place that is, that everyone is supportive of.
Thank you. Board reports. Tracy Teetz.
I want to say that I had the privilege of attending the I-25 Coalition Meeting again. One thing of note, and this may be a question for Patty, is there a way, since Cleveland is involved as far as CDOT goes, is there a way to have our reporting on the accomplishments and upcoming items reported at the I-25 Coalition with the CDOT reporting? Or is that solely going to be the, just the I-25 corridor?
No, I think we need to toot our horn over that project. We'll definitely have something prepared for the next meeting for the mayor to, to present as far as talking points at the, at the Coalition. So, thank you for bringing that up. You are very, you are correct on that. We need to be letting everybody know that we're involved and that CDOT is, is working on a project here in Wellington.
Perfect, thank you. And the other item, I did make a comment related to the residents. Very well-heard, thank you, related to the turn arrow on the east side of the interstate from CDOT. It has greatly improved that traffic congestion in that area, and I, I know it's just a turn arrow after you sit in these I-25 Coalition Meetings where they deal with billion dollars. And we, as the Town of Wellington, are super excited to have a turn arrow put up at that east side of the interstate at the Frontage Road. Other than that, I don't have any more board reports.
Thank you. Tracy Moore?
Yes, I have a consideration for the board. I was in my first alcohol board public hearing today, and as I was looking at the packet, I feel highly underqualified. Other municipalities have an alcohol authority, we have a marijuana authority. I don't know at what point the decision was made to have us handle those items, but.
I don't know at what point the decision was made to have us handle those items, but I doubt I'm the only one that doesn't have the education and background to necessarily do those things. Um, though I know you are all highly qualified. Um, I would like for us to consider discussing this at our strategic planning to consider a possible alcohol authority outside of the board.
Okay.
We can add that to the items to discuss. Um, Trustee Moyer and I talked about that a little bit today, and a lot of municipalities do have a liquor licensing authority. Um, Teresa Blau, who is our municipal judge, serves as a liquor licensing authority. Um, Kristen Brown, who serves as our marijuana licensing authority, also serves in the same capacity in other municipalities. Um, so it is some, if it's something of interest to the Board of Trustees, we can definitely bring it up, whether that's through the strategic planning piece or through a work session at another time.
Yeah, I think work sessions start, yes, yeah, cool. Tracy Cannon.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the District Two C dot meeting in uh, in Johnstown. Um, it was a good meeting. I would like to encourage the other trustees, uh, when these district meetings uh, arise to participate in these meetings. Uh, you know, this isn't really where C dot is coming in there and they're, and they're you know, kind of jamming their agenda down, down your throats essentially. I mean, that, that occurs and things. I mean, we have TPRs, we have MPOs, we have all these other uh, kind of transported, uh, transportation-related uh, uh, associations. But the District Two meeting is, is more of a networking meeting where you meet with uh, other uh, municipal leaders and their staff uh, within, uh, within our district. And they're usually very well attended. Uh, now, I was the only one from Wellington that, that uh, uh, that was there for this meeting, but I would encourage more uh, trustees to attend when they, when they occur. There's probably another meeting that will occur in the fall. The nice thing about this is, is by networking with other elected officials, uh, you get some insight about what they're doing and what's, what they're accomplishing within the municipality. And I got to brag on Wellington a bit and talk about our water project and our wastewater, excuse me, water reclamation facility project. I had to get that right from Megan back there, um, and Bob. Um, but the networking to me was, 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 I think, the best, because I had a chance to meet with uh, the mayor, several elected officials and staff from the Town of Severance. And as you know from uh, a discussion we had before uh, about Home Rule, Kevin Bonner was talking about Severance and their Home Rule efforts. And by talking with them, I was getting some more clarity, uh, and that leads me to my second point is that I'd reached out to uh, uh, Mayor Freeze of Severance, and we set up a lunch meeting, myself, uh, um, uh, Kaylor and uh, and Matt, we're all, we all got together. We've met for about an hour and a half, and, and he talked through the process of, of that and, and how encouraging it was to me, and I think it also to the mayor, about going through the process, um, and then the outcomes from becoming a Home Rule community as opposed to statutory town. And uh, we sent an email to uh, Ms. Garcia about our July sixteenth work session. Perhaps inviting uh, the mayor and some of his staff, and I know that Patty's already reached out, excuse me, Administrator uh, Garcia, has already reached out to, to set that up. It's very encouraging when you see someone that's, that's passionate about municipal government, as uh, Mayor Freeze was. Um, he served as the chairman on their uh, charter commission. And, and how it works so well. Debating all these little small items that have to go into a, a, a Home Rule Charter. And I think he's going to bring a lot of insight uh, to our work session in July. Uh, lastly, I'd like to say that I'm very proud of uh, Trustee Moyer. Thank you for your proclamation tonight. Uh, I stand with you on that. Not many people know this. I'm a father of a transgendered daughter, and this means a lot to me, because I often worry that, that as a father, that my, my, even though they're adults, I worry that, that people can be excluded because they might be a little different. And to me, uh, looking at the crowd that was here tonight, uh, and their response, and knowing the community like I do, I was very proud that they were here to support that. I was proud to uh, to be part of this as well. And uh, I think uh, whether we have a uh, a, a policy on how many proclamations and so forth, uh, I think this was an important. So thank you so much for, for doing that.
Thank you. Tracy Wigan.
No report, but I do want to say I really appreciate that turn signal over on the other side. If they could do some, uh, may, maybe make a turn lane plus a go ahead, you know, straight lane there, that would even help more. I don't know who we can bug about that, but uh, right there, what they've done there has helped it so much over there. And I know when school hits this coming fall, that's going to make a huge difference. So we appreciate whoever did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Tim.
No report.
Tracy Daly.
Also the new four-way stops. Great for safety. Thank you so much. I happen to get one on my intersection, so that makes me very happy for kids going across the street to the park. So that's great. Um, I wanted to say that if I looked slightly uh, distracted today, it's because during this meeting, I became an aunt, and my brother became a father just in time for Father's Day. So I also wanted to express Happy Father's Day to all the fathers in this upcoming week. Um, so it's a very exciting time for my family. They're all the way in Florida, but I still get, I, I got some pictures, so that's good. Other things coming up on Thursday, there is a fundraiser and kickoff the capital campaign for the Community Services Center. That's going to be at the Manor. It's a business after hours for the Chamber of Commerce. So I would hope that all of us come and show our support, given that the town of Wellington has, you know, put our, our uh, money behind them at this point already, just to make sure they're successful and know that they're supported. And invite everybody and anybody, especially those with money, to attend and, and also consider participating as well. So that is on Thursday. On Saturday is a very, very exciting time for the town. It's my two favorite groups coming together, the Main Streets Program and Parks and Rec. And they are celebrating the ten-year anniversary of our Main Street Program. Um, there is going to be some local community uh, celebrities attending from faraway lands. So I'm very excited to go. Um, I'll be volunteering. There's also historical tour and walking, walking tour that you can do. Maybe my super old house is part of it. I don't think so. But um, that's really exciting for on Saturday, uh, starting at eleven in Centennial Park downtown. So please come and celebrate our Main Street Program, and thank you for the planners, by the way, to Main, Main Street. They look beautiful, looking great. Um, additionally, in June is another holiday, um, that I did want to acknowledge and recognize for our community at WIDE. And it's Juneteenth, so it's in eighteen sixty-five, final slaves were uh, freed. About two hundred and fifty thousand slaves in the state of Texas were considered the last people who got to escape from, from slavery. I did want to acknowledge this important day, um, and let everybody know that, of course, I stand behind you, and I think that's a wonderful celebration. If there's anything I can do to help, please let me know. And then other than that, um, happy pride. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I, I don't have a report other than I, I enjoy working with all of you, and I appreciate each and every one of you, and um, we may not always work great together, but we'll find compromise and we'll get things done and uh, work well for the town. Um, every single one of you, I, I, I love you guys and appreciate you. So thank you, and goes out to you, Tracy Teets, even though you're not here. Um, that's all I have tonight. So uh, thanks, guys.
Um, having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Garcia, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teets? Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at eight forty-one.
Thank you.